Welcome, everyone, to the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of October 27, 2022. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
My name is Phil Nemasek. I am the Acting Chairman tonight in the absence of Jim Bonanno, who's not able to attend the meeting tonight. I'm going to do a roll call. Anthony Jacoby?
Present.
Louis Campana?
Present.
Mark Cunningham is not yet present, although we have some indication that he will be. And as I indicated, Jim Bonanno is not able to attend the meeting, and I am chairing it in his place. So can we do an approval of the minutes of?
That depends on whether you had any comments on those minutes.
I sent comments to the group just a short time ago.
Oh, okay. Okay, so that's fine, then. You can do that.
So.
You know, I mean, technically, Anthony wasn't here.
He wasn't here, yeah.
So do you want to hold off on those?
Well, okay, we'll wait until the end of this. So we have four applications that the board will hear this evening. I want to make a note that Application 22-15, which is the Amico Station at 497 New Rochelle Road, will not be heard this evening, and it's been adjourned to the December 1 meeting, which is our next meeting, just after Thanksgiving. So the four applications are, and I'm just going to go through them quickly, make sure that no one's wasting their time if they don't hear it. Sarafina, which is 670 White Plains Road, Embassy Cleaners HQ, which is 826 Scarsdale Avenue, Sephora, which is 670, also known as 696 White Plains Road, and the final one will be 7 Longview Drive. All right? So if you're not here for any of those, or if you're not here for any of those and want to leave now, that's perfectly fine. If you just want to join us for an evening of entertainment, you're welcome to stay. All right, let's move forward with the first application of the evening, which is Application 22-30, Sarafina, 670 White Plains Road.
Good evening. Chris Croco, Joseph Croco Architects, we're here representing the applicant, Sarafina. We are proposing to do a seasonal dining tent that we will be putting up that runs along the side of the building, about, I don't know, roughly halfway. And then we're also proposing another vestibule tent, keep the cold air out during the winter. Again, these are seasonal. The tent will be, we're not going to be including the signage for the permit set. They're going to be taken off when it goes to permit because the ARB made a comment about them, so we'll be removing them, so please, you know. And then one of the other comments we had was, the tent, the tent comes in underneath, they have the roll-up awnings that they use sometimes during the summer for shade. We're going to make a valance, some sort of valance, to go over them, like a metal cover to go over them, to make it look a little cleaner, because the tent's going to come in just under it. So that's kind of how we're going to handle that problem. And then, other than that, it's pretty straightforward. The blue matches their blue umbrellas that are out there, and it's, you know, a signature color of theirs, and that's really.
And when you say seasonal, what seasonal range? Is it a strict range, or is it?
November 1 to April 1 kind of thing, you know? The cold months.
Okay. I mean, you're not going to bounce back and forth and put it up and take it down?
No, 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 no.
It's going to go up once and come down once?
Yeah. Once this is up, it's up for those five months, whatever it is, and then it's down.
Yeah, so you get a few nice days in early March, you're not going to take the thing down?
No, 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 no.
Until there's some assurance the weather's going to be nice?
No, 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 no. The insulation time is, it's not one of those things, we're just, you know, popping up at a moment's notice.
Okay.
And you're proposing the vestibule as well?
And the vestibule in front, which will also be seasonal. Again, it's just really to keep the cold air out, so you don't get, you know, that rush of cold air in the winter.
Does that vestibule come out onto the walkway?
It does, a little bit.
By how much?
Yeah. Yeah, so the vestibule comes out about five feet, which is what we'll need to meet code, and it's about eight foot four wide. It's about as wide as the existing vestibule that's there now, kind of. There's like a small recess for the doors, so it kind of matches up nicely with that.
The general pedestrian sidewalk goes around?
Yeah, the general flow of traffic would be through here and here, so it really doesn't kind of.
But you also have the sidewalk.
We have a sidewalk here.
That C-shaped sidewalk there that I remember we approved.
We have this sidewalk that goes all the way around. I mean, that's the main sidewalk.
Yes, okay.
But the tented outdoor dining area will block pedestrian circulation in that area, so people will have to walk through the parking lot if they, if they.
Yeah, if anybody who parks here has to go this way.
Okay.
Unless, you know, they're just going to, unless, you know, which people do use this door to go in and out of the restaurant.
And the seating that's on the, I guess it's on the, on the west side of the building, on the left in the illustration?
Patio?
Patio, the patio, yeah. That seating is, is that permanent seating, or is that?
That's, yeah, we went, maybe last year?
It was last year.
Last year, we came here and we did this whole, we expanded this outdoor dining area, and this seating they do use.
But they're going to, but is that going to remain outside?
No, 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 no. This seating goes away in the winter.
Okay.
Nobody's, nobody's out here.
Will that seating, and I'm not, I'm not going to hold you to this as a hard and fast rule, but as, let's say we're in the middle of January, you have this, this tent up, and, you know, the tent, the area that you're proposing right now, that's up and that's, that has diners in it. In the middle of January, there aren't going to be diners in that patio area as well. Is that correct? That patio area, again, down there, yes. That, does that furniture, the tables, the chairs, does that get removed in January?
This will get, no, this, yeah, well, it'll get removed once the colder months, once you can't.
Yeah, okay. I'm picking January as the coldest month.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Basically, as soon as this tent goes up, these are probably going away.
Okay, so if that's the case, if those tables are largely, tables and chairs are largely out of the way, the vestibule jutting out a little bit really becomes much less of an issue, because you have a much larger area, clear area.
Yeah, yeah, these, these tables are gone, you know, it's, like I said, I mean, this is up for the cold, once the cold hits, nobody's sitting out here.
Correct.
And they take all this furniture.
But if you do get that, you know, early March day where the weather's beautiful outside, you do still retain the ability to bring those tables outside, so there might be a situation where you have everything up at once, right?
We might, we might, yeah.
Yeah, okay. It might be the exception, but it's a possibility.
The rare case that happens, yeah, we might.
But you could, you could also say that, you know, if that was the case, if there was a nice day and people wanted to dine outside, the chairs don't have to be out there in full capacity either. The one in front of the, of the entrance could be removed to allow for proper access and.
You could do that. You could just leave the, you know, the ones that would be in the way out, I would, you know, I don't know that I want to make.
If they do get that warm day, honestly, I don't see them pulling out every single seat and chairs. Maybe they're putting out a couple.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I would, I would just, I don't really feel like this is a rule that we'd be, that we'd want to police, but I would just ask that, you know, if we approve this, and, you know, you do have that vestibule sticking out, that if you are going to be using the chairs and tables in that patio area at the same time that you have the vestibule up, that you give due consideration to leaving a little extra space.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I mean.
And it's common sense.
Yeah, it's kind of, exactly, it's kind of a common sense thing.
How are the customers going to enter and exit the tent from the inside of the restaurant?
Um, well, yeah, there's a couple ways they could do it. I mean, they could be seated through this door, because these doors all open up, these doors all fold, they open up, so they could enter from inside the restaurant, and they could leave this way, or they could, you know, depending on, they might want to put a hose this here and seat them from there, you know.
Right, and what about, like, heat?
Um, heating, you know, they're kind of relying on the heat from.
Inside.
Inside to kind of just, kind of, it's going to be a little colder. I mean, we can't, you know, they, they understand that, you know, we can't put propane heaters here, we can't do anything like that.
Right. And in terms of, the, the restaurant can be closed, completely closed off by closing those, those doors that run alongside it, right? And so that, it doesn't, it doesn't present a problem that someone can punch through the?
Oh, no, 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 no. This all, this all gets locked up, these doors get locked, so even if somebody punches through it, they still can't get in the restaurant.
Yeah, good, good, okay, makes sense. All right, and this was before the Architectural Review Board, and then you already mentioned one comment they had about removing the logo, I guess, from.
Yeah, they didn't like the logo on the, on the.
Yes, you sound a little down about that. I think it sounds like you were a big fan of the logo, weren't you?
They have enough branding, honestly.
You can admit it, you know?
They have enough branding, honestly. I don't think it's a make or break.
Okay.
And the other comment that Chris mentioned, and I'm not sure whether you understood, and maybe you did, because I might have missed some of it, they have a yellow awning now, and when they retract that yellow awning, it's still visible above the blue tent, so that's what they want.
Which is the aluminum cover.
Yeah, we're going to make like an aluminum cover.
Yeah, yeah, and that was also discussed with the ARB, okay.
So those were the two conditions.
Those were the two, okay, good. Well, I'm okay with this, but do either of you gentlemen have any questions?
I think you covered it. Handicap accessibility, that's, that's in the front of the restaurant, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The accessible entrance is at the front.
Yeah, the accessible entrance will remain at the front, you know, we'll have.
One on the side was never accessible to begin with, other than just circulation, you know, through where the tent was, but at least, at least there's one.
Yeah, this is accessible. I mean, yeah, yeah, this is your accessible in and out, yeah.
Perfect, perfect. No other questions with me.
And what about the flooring? It's going to stay the pavers, I think it is now?
Right now, here? Pavers, yeah, pavers.
It'll stay?
Yeah, we just put down the new pavers here to fill it, to match it and pull it in.
Do they have their own proprietary anchoring system for the, for the tent?
Yeah.
They do.
Yeah, we have those drawings, if anybody wants to see them.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on Application 22-30, Sarafina, 670 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Public? We had a little snafu last time, where there were a couple ladies here who didn't realize that the public hearing, the announcement of the public hearing meant that if they had, if they had any comments, this was the time to get up and offer those comments. So I'm going to give this disclaimer once. If anyone here has a comment on, on this particular application, the Sarafina application, now is the time to raise your hand and come to the mic. Not here, hearing or seeing anyone do so, I make a motion to close the public hearing on Application 22-30, Sarafina, 670 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any further questions, guys?
No.
All right, well then, I make a motion to approve Application 22-30, Sarafina, 670 White Plains Road, as submitted, with, with the, the comment that you use common sense and good judgment with respect to that vestibule area. Yeah, okay. I make the motion to approve the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
All right, next up is Application 22-29, Embassy Cleaners HQ, 826 Scarsdale Avenue.
My name is Arthur Lex, I'm the architect for Embassy Cleaners HQ. This is Andy Rifkin, who is the owner of the premise and, and the business. And any questions that will be asked about the operation of the premises, Andy would be happy to answer to you.
Good.
So I'm going to first introduce you to the building. I assume maybe you know it or not, the building, this is what, this is the building that's on, that you see from 826 Scott's Leavenor. It was, previously it was Flywheel, which was a gym with bicycles, I assume, and an open space for activity. That was from about 2002, I think? I'm not 100% sure, somewhere around, that's what the drawing said. And prior to that, it was Tumblebugs, which was, I think, a nursery. And then before that, it was a florist, and before that, I haven't got a clue. So I'll go through the pictures of the building and the different views I've been, then that tell you what we're doing. So this is the view from Scarsdale Avenue. This is the building to the right, which is a funeral home. The building to the left is, is a four, I think it's a three-story apartment building with a first floor of, of commercial. This is the view looking towards the elevation from, like, from Scarsdale Avenue back to the back of the property line. What we're proposing to do is put in, enlarge an opening over here, behind the dumpster, which I'll show you. This is a blow-up of what's behind the dumpster, so there's going to be an opening here to allow for the dry cleaning equipment to get into the building. And to do that, we're duplicating a, the same style as this opening, a little higher, because the machines are higher, and the storefront will have to be removed to get the machinery in, and in the future, it has to be taken out, the same, same process. This is the view from the garage, oh, I'm sorry, this is the garage structure, which we're going to raise and redirect the water to the front of the building from the rain, because over the years, it was pitched back, the whole back of the building from inside is almost ratted out. I'll show you pictures of that. This is a view from the street that's, I don't know the name of the street, but over here, I took a picture to see what you can see through this one opening where it's, the building is, is exposed, and, and that's it.
Okay.
And from, from the neighbor, behind, you can't even see the building, that's, they have such heavy vegetation, and it's really dense, and behind that, probably a six-foot-high fence, and they're elevated higher. So now I'm going to tell you what we're going to be hopefully doing. When the florist was, was in the space, there was a big overhead door here, and we opened up the inside, and the lintel is still intact. So using that lintel, we are proposing to put an eight-foot-two-wide opening of two fixed side lights, two, one swinging door, I'll show you the elevation, and, and a clear story above of light that we, that they can open to get, to bring fresh air into the space when, when it gets too hot. Is that correct, Andy? When it gets too hot from, all the machinery, interestingly enough, is controlled by steam. We're going to take the existing openings for the, for the three garage doors, and we're going to make it a little bit wider, and then there were two door openings that presently exist, we're closing one up and making the entrance into the garage this way. The garage presently does not attach, no, there's no communication between the garage and the building presently. And this is just the basic layout of the equipment when this drawing was prepared. This is the main entry, there'll be reception here in the sense where you'll bring your clothes, and everything else is part of what would be considered the operation of the We had to take out eight bathrooms, shower rooms and bathrooms, that was for Flywheel, the models, the inside, to see what was going on there. This is not important. Oh, we're converting, oh, we're converting, that was an apartment up above presently into a, sorry. It's small, about 1,200 square foot, second floor above, the space over here. Now we're going to convert it into an office, an office, a record room, and a conference room for the operation of Mr. Rifkin's business, which he has a couple other cleaning establishments, but two more in Larchmont?
Larchmont, yes.
Right. He's based, his, he basically, they deliver and bring in the clothing. That's the majority of the work?
So the majority of the work is.
If you're going to comment, Mr. Rifkin, why don't you come to the.
Oh, you're.
Yeah, and I, I know you've been identified, but, but once more for the record.
Of course. So Arthur was commenting on, on the operation, so the majority of our business is done via pickup and delivery service. We have vans that go throughout the county, making hundreds of pickups a day, and that's the bulk of our business. So those items are picked up and then brought back in for processing.
They're brought to a, a central location where, where the cleaning takes place?
Correct, yes, that's correct. So we're just now relocating that to this location now on Scarsdale Avenue, that's the plan.
Okay, but the, the majority of, of clothing is, is cleaned off-site, but, but are there some operations here, live operations?
You're referring to on Scarsdale Avenue?
Yes, mhm.
Yes, so the plan is that the items will be picked up, brought to that location, and cleaned in that location. Currently, they're, they're, they're cleaned elsewhere at our large, one of our Larchmont locations. We're going to be relocating that process and that equipment to this location.
Okay, so is this location going to be used to clean, is this going to be your primary cleaning location for the three establishments?
Yes.
Okay. But it's also a location where you can bring clothing, and the clothing will be cleaned at that.
Yes, so there, there will be a retail component as well. And by the way, we currently have another location in Scarsdale right now in the Village, you know, in between the Chico's and, and the post office. We've had a location there for over 20 years. So we're presently established with retail in the Village, so we're going to be, the plan is to ultimately be shifting that, the retail from that location to this location. And we are going to be building out a retail lobby, which you could see on the plan that, that we just looked at previously.
Okay.
Although, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, our retail locations are not the, the bulk of our business at all. It's a very small part relative to the amount that we bring in from, from our pickup and delivery service. People really prefer the convenience of having their, their laundry and dry cleaning picked up and delivered, so particularly where we are in Larchmont, there's not much parking, and even in our Scarsdale, current Scarsdale location, there's not a great amount of parking. So people prefer to have us go and visit them.
Okay. Well, one concern that I do have, because I'm assuming the pick, pickup and delivery services originate in a single point, and, and if most of the cleaning is going to be done at this facility, I'm assuming there will be vans or, or other vehicles.
Yes.
Coming to and from this facility.
Yes.
With some frequency.
So the way we operate things, we have five, well, we have five vans, but our, our primary deliveries occur just out of three vans, and the other vans do, one is, is a backup van in case one breaks down, and another one of our vans is a shuttle van, that the purpose is to go between the stores and picking up clean, rather, picking up dirty clothes and delivering back processed orders. And the other key point of, of the shuttle vans is, the shuttle van will go out and meet the other three delivery vans throughout the day, so we're not having three vans going in and out all day from our facility, rather, there's one van that will meet the vans out in the field, so to speak, pick up all the bags of, of dirty clothes and shuttle them back. So it's really just one van, excuse me, that will be going back and forth with, with regularity.
What about, what about nighttime? Where are the vans going to be parked at this location, all five?
So as it stands now, yes, although there might be some thought. I mean, right now, I do allow two of the vans to go back home with two of the drivers, I'm not sure if I'll continue that or not. So at the moment, you know, let's, let's plan on all five being parked.
All right, now, I, I know that there were, it looks like.
Do you want me to go over those?
Yeah, well, I was going to, were you before the ARB?
Yes.
All right, and what were the suggestions that the ARB made, if any? Did they have any comments?
So it's ours, Andy was not.
Okay.
One suggestion was to do a roof plan that shows the penetrations to the roof, so I put a plan in your set that I did, because it was the next day I had, actually had to file those drawings. But I haven't updated them, so I'm going to bring it to you right now. That drawing, A9.
Okay, so he's updated it, he's going to hand it out.
Yep. I just found this information out yesterday, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Six drawers. I'll jump to that right now, but can I show you the elevation, because it also would be doing the garage, so I don't know which one you want me to look at.
Yeah, so, so I would record, because, yeah, you did not go over the garage, did you? So I would, that's really the primary part of your work. So I would do the garage first and then the roof plan.
Yes.
This is not the garage, but I'm doing it in order of the drawers, but it's complicated, up here on the. So this is what I was talking about with the new opening that's being provided, proposed, two side lights, a clear story light over the opening, more or less to pick up this opening that is here, but it has to be higher, because I have to have an eight-foot-two opening clear to get the big machines in, two dry cleaning machines, they're really quite huge. And, and these pictures. And these pictures I showed you already. Let me do this one first and then I'll get to the garage, because it's, why are we doing this with the garage? These are pictures of the interior of the garage, the rear wall. Because the pitch is back, it's right on the property line. I didn't see any gutter, but can't get up there, but inside it's really almost all, not all destroyed, but not safe by any means. And somewhere in its history, they built a They built a stud wall here. They took the roof off, reframed it, but they didn't have long enough TJIs. So they put a TJI here and a split over here. Why? I don't know, because TJIs you can get in 25 feet of land. I don't know when that was done. But this, all that stuff back here that's resting on is righted out. So we decided to take, and it's all pitching back. So we decided to lift it back up, pitch forward, put a gutter here, and then a leader down. And what happens on the site, I did that on an arm drawing, because I couldn't see space, is that there's an existing downspout here that's taking the water from the main roof into the ground. And I said, where's that water going? So I had a plumbing firm come out and put a camera down the drain. And he went out as long, as far as the camera can go. Went past the sanitary sewer that's in Scarsdale Avenue, and there is a stormwater sewer. So I'm not sure whether it goes directly into the stormwater sewer. We don't know that yet. Line, or it goes to the catch basin that's right over here. I don't know how we would know that unless we get someone to pick up this big grate and see whether the pipe is there. Otherwise, it was clear all the way. When it rains, there's no water coming out of this point at all. So that's, so the roof of this building is pitched to a drain here on the roof. Goes across the roof. Goes into that pipe, down, and into, and somewhere right along the the five-foot concrete path that they have, you know, sidewalk there. Since we repaved this whole area and take up this broken asphalt, will give us an opportunity to put this right into the, open that up and put it right at the end of the pipe and take the drains away. So this is what the elevation will look like, that's what it looks presently. This is what it will look like. These are roll-up doors. We're chained. There's no room for the, any mechanism in there. The doors are 10 feet high, because the vans are almost nine-for-three in height if we put three, store three vans in there for parking. And the side elevation that I showed you that looks like a beat-it-up shack will look like, we'll put stucco, we'll build, we'll take off whatever's finished there if the neighbor allows us to get on the property. I mean, the neighbor, which is the funeral home property. And we'll put up a block and stucco it so it looks like the front of the building. So that's basically what we're doing on the garage building.
Put save? Or not?
Uh-oh, what happened?
Yeah, one Okay, I think we're good.
Can I help you hold this minute?
Yeah, the ground is down a bit.
Sure. I can't see That just stays like that?
Doesn't fall, we're good. So you mentioned the roof. I think that this discussion of drainage and that started with my question about what the Architectural Review Board suggested and what you've done in response to their suggestions.
Wasn't, there was no suggestion, there was no suggestion of changing this, that I remember.
Yeah, you know what might be a little bit easier? So you had mentioned the ARB comments, but he wanted to finish his presentation in terms of his proposal. So I honestly think it might just be more efficient for me to go through those comments and then they could address it. So, and you know, I'll just start at the top. So there were a number of residents that came to the ARB meeting and were told that most of their concerns really related more to the planning board review process. So one of the questions was to clarify where trash will be stored prior to pickup. And the ARB and residents and the Building and Planning Department recommended the trash be stored inside until the pickup day to ensure that site remains clear and clear of debris and doesn't attract rodents, that kind of thing. So can you clarify where you
Yes, they don't generate very much trash, especially organic trash. They'll store it in the garage. The day that it has to be picked up, they'll do whatever is required, bring it to the curb early in the morning, and it'd be taken away. Nothing's going to be stored visually on the property. No containers, no nothing.
I believe that will most likely be a condition of approval so that, you know, that it can only be brought out on pickup days.
Yes, of course.
Okay. And then you know, people were kind of concerned and wanted an explication and explanation of what types of chemicals, if any, are used during the dry cleaning process. What types of fumes might be emitted, how they'd be vented. Obviously concerns about air quality issues and safety issues.
That's why I just presented that drawing and I can explain to you, and Andy can give you a little more detail on it.
With regard to the roof mounted?
Oh, yeah, and where the, what I showed on there were all the penetrations and what they do, what it's doing. And only, there's only one penetration, and that's on the dry cleaning, and it's a two-inch pipe that really, when it finally gets to the outside, it's all filtered already, and we're
Right, so
Let me get, I'll open it.
Sure. Yeah, so there is, there are two dry cleaning machines. And there will be one roof penetration. There'll be lines coming up and teed off together, so one roof penetration. I believe it's two inches wide, gooseneck at the top. And this will be emitting essentially hot air. So the solvent that's being used in the dry cleaning machine is non-toxic. It's called Salvon K4. We've been using it for, I think, eight to 10 years at this point. Most dry cleaners have traditionally used Perclarethylene, otherwise known as PERC, P-E-R-C, which is a suspected carcinogen, and it's not great stuff. And many, many dry cleaners are no longer using that solvent. And in fact, New York State has very significant regulations now that that either prohibit that and co-located buildings by a certain time. They're allowed in freestanding buildings, but in a very, very regulated way. But we don't use that. So we use Salvon K4, which is non-toxic. It's environmentally friendly. And it's made partly from a corn derivative. So it's actually, it's called biomass, I believe is what that's called. I'm not sure if I have the terminology correct. But it's been approved by New York State. I have some documents with me, if you'd like me to share those with you, from New York State indicating the approvals. And as I said, it is non-toxic. I have information from the company on that as well. As well as a safety data sheet that indicates that. So to get back to the other question. So the, whatever fumes that are coming out from the dry cleaning machines, aside from the fact that they are non-toxic, they still go through a carbon filtration before being expelled to the environment. So what you're seeing that comes out through the roof penetration, through that two-inch roof penetration, is the remains of the air that goes through the carbon filtration. So it's literally just hot air is what's coming out.
And then maybe before we look at the roof plan, we'll leave that for the end, maybe. The, I think residents were just curious about the proposed hours of operation. And I think one of the concerns was having deliveries coming early or late where trucks are backing up and, you know, you hear the beeping and that kind of thing.
Sure, of course. So our hours of operation, as they stand now, are 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And I see no reason to change that. You know, that's not to say that, you know, on some rare occasions that someone may show up early or stay late, but it's, you know, that will not be, you know, a normal process at all.
Is that seven days a week?
So, I'm sorry, so that's five days a week. And Saturday, the hours are a little bit shorter, 7:30 to 5:00 on Saturday. Closed on Sunday.
And closed on Sunday, there isn't anyone in there working
Correct.
at all?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that's not to say that we may not have a cleaning crew in there cleaning up, or, you know, maybe on a very rare occasion, if, you know, if, whatever, the equipment breaks down and they need to be there on a Sunday to finish up something.
Like the IT guys always work on the weekends, right?
Yeah, right.
So, okay, got it.
And then the ARB just also wanted a little clarification with regard to the, you had discussed the status of a retaining wall that was going to be replaced or repaired. And I think that is the neighboring property that's going to replace that for you. Was that the case?
So, yeah, so there, so the neighboring property there, it's owned by the funeral home. Yeah, so there was an old house, residential home there that was uninhabited, I think kind of falling apart. And the funeral home decided to take down that building completely, and they paved, you know, that area to, you know, create additional parking. During the process, they removed half of the retaining wall, thinking it was theirs, but in fact, it's ours. I've asked them to kindly replace it. That hasn't occurred yet. We'll ask maybe a little nicer, although we were very nice the first time, but we'll ask nicely again if they will kindly replace that.
And then the final comment that I had in my notes was with regard to the roof plan. And I think there were two concerns. One, going back to, you know, what kind of venting systems there would be, which I think has been explained. But then also just aesthetically, if anything was going to show above the roof and what that would look like.
Speak to that, I'm not really sure about that.
I couldn't hear it too well.
So she wants to know about the roof plan?
Yeah, and if anything will be, like, is anything projecting above a parapet or will be visible?
I found interesting, by the way, I want to Google Earth today. And almost all of the penetrations, I understand where they're going in relationship to your apartment building. I was able to Google Earth and do a picture. This portion here is basically a blank wall on the building. Can you see that? Go ahead and zoom in. There are two windows there, and I believe, given the scale of those windows, they are bathroom windows. And they are over the second story
Which is the offices?
The offices. So all of the penetrations are beyond that, are in this area here. And now I can go to the roof plan. So I was surprised to see that I placed it, and I placed it over the proposed equipment where they were going to be placed the penetrations through the roof. And there were quite three of the windows from the apartment building. So this is the wall that I was pointing to. This is the wall that I was pointing to on the picture, right here. There are going to be two 12-inch ducts from the dryers that penetrate the roof here, and those gooseneck too?
I believe so, yes. Yes, they are.
There's going to be, that's the two-inch pipe that's coming from the, from the cleaning machines. This is a water tank that sits about this high, 34 inches in diameter. And that's for the cleaning, what does that do, that water on that machine?
Yeah, so there's a water tank that will reside on the roof not far from where the dry cleaning machines be located below it. And that just provides cooling, cool water to go into the dry cleaning machines and provides a cooling function for certain points during the dry cleaning process.
And the other penetration is a 12-inch vent chimney stack, because there'll be a boiler down here that runs the machines. I spent a lot of time today speaking to the manufacturer and getting the drawings. It has to be a minimum of 30 feet from any building. So that's the dimension. It will be, it will be six inches above the roof. And it'll have a cap on it, that's it. Second area of the flue. Those are the roof penetrations. And up on the roof now, there is one, two, three, four, five HVAC units. That was previously, we're going to utilize that for the general heating of the space when it goes in the evening time, because the steam just dominates. And it'll be for cooling, for drop-down flexible tubing to cool the people that are around the machines. That's about how the operation works. As far as I know, you can ask Andy more questions about that.
So the 12-inch diameter, I believe what it is is a Class A flue, double-walled flue, right?
It's a double wall.
Right.
Class B. Class B.
Right, so it's 30 feet from the neighboring building, but do you know exactly what the dimension is from its location in the plan to the residential dwelling?
This one? When I first started out, I was going to put it over here.
Right.
And that was 49 feet away from the residence. After I got the specifications and spoke to them, it's not more complicated where you put that vent from the boiler, it really is. It can only go one-quarter of the height of the vent horizontally. And it can, that's the key. So if there's the boiler room, I can only put it over here to get the 30 feet. I can't move it. I wasn't taking it further away. I can't, but it made the 30 feet, that's all. That's their minimum.
But it's more than 30 feet from the residential structure?
Oh, from the, well, this is residential too, by the way.
Well, the house.
Oh, yeah, you know, from the residential, probably about 60 feet. That's the corner of the residential, the roof line. And that's with Google Earth. I couldn't measure it on this, I don't have a survey.
Marvin, that's something the Building Department can, they can confirm?
How far it is?
As a condition, yeah.
I'm assuming they're going to have a thorough review from the Building Department, of course, a dry cleaning place.
But sometimes they look at it as, it's all, you know, just within the meets and bounds of the property.
Right, they might have a, I'm not sure if the town has tax maps that will actually show the buildings on the tax, or get them more accurate, but I'm from what I was able to tell from using Google Earth with their measuring, when I put the flue over here, which I can't do because the ladder is much too long, it was 49 feet, 48 feet something, you know.
So I just want to clarify, so you measured it? So I just want to clarify, so you measured it, it was forty-nine feet, but then you moved it even further away?
Oh, yeah, I moved it even further.
And, and that, that, it sounds like you don't have much flexibility to move it any further.
No, I can't.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, anyway, when I spoke to Fulton, the manufacturer, they said, "That's our guidelines." Do you want to move closer? But I will not do that, because once you deviate from their specifications, you open to a lot of problems.
Okay, and I, I don't know if we fully went through the issue of parking. There's, there's some, you said you were going to repave that entire?
Yeah, it's terrible. It really looks like an alligator skin.
And, and how many, the, the vans were going to be parked in the garage?
I think, I think the ARB's question about parking wasn't so much the restriping or anything. It's whether the, they had raised curbs and that kind of thing. And I, and I think it is basically just going to be striped.
It's, it's what it is.
It appears, is there any requirement for a number of parking spaces?
Ten, it looks like ten.
Yes, I mean, they, they meet the requirement. Actually, dry cleaners require very few parking spaces.
I would think so, yeah.
And it's, it's, yeah, so they're.
Well, they had, when Flywheel had there, they maybe eighty people in there?
No, I'm just, you look, got to, got to be thorough. All right. I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on application twenty-two dash twenty-nine, Embassy Cleaners HQ, eight twenty-six Scarsdale Avenue.
Second.
Members of the public, if you want to comment on Embassy Cleaners HQ, now is your opportunity.
I'm Thomas Davy, one of the neighbors, number nineteen Brandback Avenue. And I couldn't hear properly behind the, my hair and laugh, you know? So I just have to... You have the two twelve-inch vents coming up, right, for the dryers? Two twelve-inch vents coming up for the dryers?
Vents.
Two?
Yes, two, yes.
What height are they coming up off the roof?
I believe he said...
We can come back to that. And also, I want to be sure that there's no odor, odors from smells, for want of a better word, from these vents. Because we're very close. My house is directly on the diagonal of that property. Okay, it's right behind the funeral home. So obviously, my patio is there, so I'd be concerned about smells and odors. And I want to be assured that we're not going to have that, because otherwise, you know, there're going to be problems, you know? And I don't want to have a problem with my neighbors.
Should I respond to the microphone?
Well, just let me finish up my few more questions and then, if you don't mind, please. Well, there was a few questions there, but you said there's no, it's only existing air conditioning? There's no new air conditioning going in, correct? So what other questions was there? Oh, yeah, how many, how many employees do you, are you going to have, do you know?
So inside the main, the first floor, as well as the office, we should have thirteen people.
But where are they all going to park? Where are they going to park their cars, their vehicles?
Should I stand up and just?
Yeah, well, let's, let, why don't let the gentleman just finish your comments?
Okay, sorry.
I think it's probably better to do it that way than to.
I think so.
Okay, yeah. I think actually, that's it, you know? Most, everything else was answered.
Okay.
Sorry, there was one other thing. You definitely don't have any deliveries on Sundays, correct? No trucks on Sundays?
I, I can understand, sorry.
Nothing on Sundays?
Nothing on Sundays, with, with trucks and all of that and? Okay.
Yeah, he did state that there could be an exceptional circumstance where they had to do repairs on a Sunday, because it's the one day that they're closed. It, it might, I, I'm imagining that would be a very unusual circumstance.
I understand that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so.
He'd have a question about the vents.
Yes, so I, I just texted my, my equipment vendor just to double-check on that. So I want to, I want to give an accurate answer to that. I'm, I'm pretty sure that, I don't know if he said three feet or six feet. I, I believe that's the range, but I, I want to just double-check what he said. But, you know, certainly not higher than six feet.
Okay.
I'd like to point out also that the dry vents, these two surfaces are dog.
Right.
Are another hundred feet from, just the property line. So probably a hundred and fifty feet from your, hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty-two feet. It's way, it's almost right near the, it's second story, a portion of the building. These two.
I understand, but you know what, you have to understand that we're going to see it. It's going to be in our line of vision too, you know?
I, are, are you in, in the house, just directly behind the building? Okay, yeah. So I, I believe that the, the height, that there's vegetation and trees there that, that are quite high. And I, I believe that your grade is higher than our grade to be, to begin with, if I'm not mistaken. Because our, our building, the grade goes on an angle downward towards Scarsdale Avenue. And I'm, I'm quite sure that you have between vegetation that's growing behind our building, which extends out, I believe, five feet or eight feet behind the building, Arthur, do you know? The height of it? I, it's, I know it's very high, but I don't know.
It looks to be about eight to, eight to ten feet above the roof line.
Right, so, so, so I would be surprised if, if that would be in, in your line of vision. I think it'll be, it'll probably be fine. Yep.
I didn't want to see it, twelve to fifteen feet above the roof.
Of course, no, yeah, it's, no, it's, yeah, it's, it's not going to be twelve to fifteen feet, that, that much I know. And in terms of what comes out of there, so these are attached to, to dryers, so it's steam dryers. So basically, it's, it's water vapor that's coming out of, out of there. With regard to your question about odors, so there, there are no odors. You know, the only thing that, that might have an odor would be, you know, back in, in, in the old days when you had perchlorethylene, that had a very strong odor. It was a dry cleaning solvent. SK four does not have that odor at all. But aside from that, whatever is vented out through the roof in that two-inch opening is, has been through a carbon filtration. So it's just, it's hot water vapor is really what's coming out of it. So, you know, there's, there's nothing else in it. It's just basically water at that point. How often?
Are they cleaned?
Yep. You're talking about how often are, are the, are, are, are the, the two-inch lines cleaned? Oh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. So, so the filters, we actually regenerate after every load. It's regenerated. How do I, how do I explain this?
So I assume that the way most, most of us view a filter working is the filter takes out some particles and those particles stick.
Right.
So how, how, the regeneration, how does, what does that do to the particles that are stuck?
I, I, I don't know enough about the, the actual scientific or, or, or engineering process to answer that question. But I'll say that whatever, whatever waste is ultimately generated from the machine, and actually, I take that back. So the filters, every, every few months, the filters are replaced. So I, you know, they're, they're spent. There, there's nothing, there's like no utility in them anymore. So whatever carbon was there has done its job. And they're replaced, and they're put into canisters and picked up by National Waste Management or Safety Clean are the two companies that we use, so they pick them up. And they're stored inside in a, in a drum until they pick it up. So.
Another question was how many employees, and I would say onsite at a specific time together, and where will they park?
So, so we have, so thirteen, so we have eleven employees in the, in the plant area, plant and retail area, and two full-time employees upstairs in, in the offices, that's thirteen. And we have the drivers that come in. So there's four drivers on, on a, on a daily basis for the most part. As far as the people in the plant are concerned, many of them take public transportation. They don't have cars. So I believe that we have, out of the, so out of the thirteen people, there are... I believe there are five cars out of the thirteen people. And out of the drivers that are coming, so if there's four drivers in a particular day, they... I know three of them have cars. I think actually all four have cars, come to think of it. So there's nine cars. So in terms of parking, we have ten parking spots outside, and we have three spots in the garage. So we have thirteen spots. So that should be five, and so there's nine, theoretically nine cars.
But do you, do you, do you retain a certain number of spots for retail customers?
Yeah, so, yes, so we'll have like three spots for, for retail, which should be adequate, more than adequate, actually.
And just across the street, there is a substantial amount of public parking spots as well?
Yeah, there's a ton of parking on the street there. So, yeah, and you've got the deli there where people are in and out of there all day long. And, you know, spots are always opening up for that as well, from where I can see. Were there any other questions? I don't remember.
No, the, the last one was with regard to the deliveries on Sunday, and that you answered.
Correct.
Okay, when you stand up and, yeah, sure.
At the last meeting, I had spoken about garbage receptacles. Where are they going to be stored, the garbage receptacles? The previous people that were there had a company come in. You had, they had garbage outside, garbage containers, which I had a problem with all the time, because you have firm, and you're going to have squirrels and all that, you know? And we spoke about it at the last meeting was, or we prefer that any garbage receptacles were kept inside the building until collection day, you know?
Yeah, I think that was a condition that we discussed, yeah.
We, we live in the neighborhood, so.
Of course, you're welcome. Yeah, I, I believe that was addressed earlier. So the trash will be kept inside the garage until trash pickup day, in which case it'll be taken out.
And that would be a condition of approval of the application. We would, we would condition the approval, so that is something that we could, you know, if, if, if they were not honoring that, we, we could take, take appropriate action. But because there is a pledge to keep it within the garage, I believe it was, until the, and, and to only put the garbage out on the, the day of delivery. And, and there was also a representation that the amount of garbage is fairly small for the size of the operation. So that, that question has been answered, but thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful comments. Appreciate it. Are there any other comments from the public while we have the public hearing open? Not, not seeing any more comments. Make a motion to close the public hearing on application twenty-two dash twenty-nine, Embassy Cleaners HQ.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I think we've pretty thoroughly examined this. It looks like, I, I think a very important consideration here is that you've represented that you're using the very latest technology and that, because I think all of us have the memories of, of the smell of dry cleaning, and it's not a pleasant smell, and, and I could absolutely understand where, if, if I were a neighbor, I would be quite concerned with that. Now, you know, there's, you know, there's a level of trust, I guess, that we have. You've come forward, you've told us about this process and, and that it's all in compliance with New York regulations and the like. So I, I think otherwise, it looks like you've addressed pretty much all of the considerations that the ARB raised, that the members of the public have raised, and, and they have been, there have been several. And so, under those circumstances, I, I really am out of questions to ask. And I, I, you know, I believe you've been thorough enough that, and, and there does appear to be, this is certainly a, a use that's, that's supported by the zoning. So I, I would not have a problem moving forward with the approval of this application, subject to the condition about the garbage. So with that said, I make a motion. Gentlemen, do you have any further comments?
I have no, no further comments.
No further.
All right, so I make a motion to approve application twenty-two dash twenty-nine, Embassy Cleaners HQ, eight twenty-six Scarsdale Avenue, subject to the condition that we discussed regarding the storage of trash in an interior position, which you've represented would be the garage. And that the only time we should see that garbage outside is on a collection, a garbage collection day. So subject to that, and obviously, the building department will, will verify certain of these numbers and make sure everything's in compliance. So subject to that, I make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Good luck.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah, no, he's, he's a very good advocate, too.
Sure.
Okay. Application twenty-two dash thirty-six Sephora, six seventy, AKA six ninety-six White Plains Road.
Hello.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good evening.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Take care.
I'm thinking Cunningham doesn't look like he's here.
I've been checking my emails and my texts and nothing.
Try to call him?
Didn't banana come in in a pencil, but that would be a lot to ask for.
Well, he's in, at a event in Manhattan.
Oh, got it, okay, I'll be partying, all right. Party-ing, yeah, I know.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ben Cardia. I work for Ziskovich Architects, representing Sephora, and located at six nine six White Plains Road. Most of you have seen this before, so I don't have a whole lot to say about it. But basically, we're putting in Sephora into a previously located three-tenant situation. So we are currently going to have a sweet green, which is there. And an adjacent, well, two adjacent spaces that are currently not tenanted, but that's not part of this application. This application is for the facade, and that's what I'll be showing on the next. This application is for the facade, and that's what I'll be showing on the next board. So one of the comments that came from the ARB last time, which is not really a comment, since it was part of signage, I just updated the elevation, so I showed a, an actual legal signage. They are gonna come back and request a variance, that's up to them. But ultimately, it's going to be, at least from their branding standpoint, a storefront, black and white stone, a black metal panel, and then a granite base, and so that's kind of what, what's shown up there. You can look at them if you'd like, but that's going to be the composition. This is rendering of what the final, final facade will look like, irrespective of the, the actual signage. It, it's a little out of proportion for them, so like I said, they're gonna, they're gonna make some recommendation to request something a little bigger.
So wait, is, are they gonna, who are they requesting that variance from, the signage?
The sign review committee has the authority to waive the requirements. What they presented to the ARB, the letters were thirty-six inches high. For eighteen inches is what's permitted, and
Correct.
Yeah, so the ARB made it clear that they felt that the Sephora as proposed was too large.
Okay, and this rendering shows the as proposed, or the, is this the eight?
That's as permitted, that, this is as permitted.
This is the as permitted, okay, got it.
Yes, this, this is the design as proposed with the signage as permitted, yes.
Okay, and, and so the, the original preference for the applicant was to make this signage about twice as large?
Twice the size, that's correct.
Okay.
So they'll, I'm not sure where they're gonna go with this, but I at least wanted to put them on notice that this is what the
It's permitted.
Permitted, yeah, so, and
And we can approve what's permitted?
Well, you don't approve, yeah, you, you have nothing to do with signage.
It's just a facade approval. Yes, 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 yes.
I know, it's, it's kind of a whole thing, I could have left it off, but it did not.
Then that looks weird, too, I think
Yeah, yeah, no, that's good, yeah.
It's gonna be somewhere between eighteen inches and thirty-six inches, yeah.
That's right, so it's, and that, yeah, so this gives us a perspective of what it is going, yeah, what, what it may look like. Okay.
That's right. I think the only thing I did not mention prior to this, which is probably important to the planning and not so much the ARB, is that we do provide a canopy, kind of, well, they know it at different names in different locations, but a sort of metal construction that, that extends off the building. We will be providing drainage for that, and that drainage will be coming back into the building and connecting to their storm water, the building storm water drainage. So I did want to just highlight that as a, as an element.
How far out does that go?
It only goes out about two feet, I believe. So it's not, it's not significant, but it's enough to demand we do something with the, with the snow, especially the snow.
Yes.
That was, that was the condition.
The sidewalk there is, is fairly deep, the sidewalk in front of the store.
Very deep, like, I think it's fifteen or twenty, twenty feet.
All right, and you are building out slightly from the facade of the, of the existing structure?
I'm sorry?
You're, are you building out slightly from the facade of the existing structure?
Yes, it's gonna be four inches out from the existing structure. The, it, this, this metal panel, like, to the left and to the right, currently is a brick construction that's not being shown. So we're gonna come out four inches from the, the existing face, and then an inch from the metal panel face. So it's gonna be a metal panel covering
Right.
over the existing condition. And the final board, which is only, what I showed last to the ARB is the left and right. So this is actually gonna sit inside what used to be a wine stop and an ant tailor. So there's gonna be a new demising wall that's, that's put up. And we're reconstructing the facade to meet a type of brand that, that they like. It's, it's a little bit of cantilever from the existing facade, only to make the thing flat. It's kind of their branding style and type. Other than that, thank you very much.
All right. Any questions? I'm gonna make a motion then to open the public hearing on application twenty-two dash thirty-six Sephora, six seventy White Plains Road, also known as six ninety-six White Plains Road. Any members of the public wanna speak about Sephora? Not seeing any, I make a motion.
You've got nothing.
Yes, so I make a motion to close the public hearing on application twenty-two dash thirty-six Sephora.
Second.
Who in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, wait, we, we still have to, to vote on the application, seems all rather innocuous to me. I know that my, my wife and daughters are pleased that Sephora will be making an appearance in our town. And, but, but that does not affect my decision at all, obviously.
Of course not.
But it, it looks like it's an attractive facade, and certainly one that's consistent with the brand, I think. And you can go knock yourself out with the size of the, the Sephora signage, but that's not our concern. But in terms of the facade, I, I, I think it looks very handsome, and, and I think it'll be a fine addition to that area. So I make a motion to approve application twenty-two dash thirty-six Sephora, six ninety-six White Plains Road, or six seventy White Plains Road, depending on how you, what numbers you're using, as submitted.
Second.
Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, good night.
All right, good luck.
Good luck.
Yes. And unfortunately, since we, we've gotten to application, the fourth application, which is application twenty-two dash thirty-seven, seven Longview Drive, and since the applicant, the application would be presented by a member of the board, Mr. Campana, which would only leave two members of the board to, to consider the application, we would not have a quorum, we wouldn't have a sufficient, a sufficient number of individuals. So regrettably, Louis, I think you're gonna have to advise your, your, your client that the numbers didn't support your presentation today.
Yes, unfortunately, and I
And I'm sorry for that, and we will put you, well, we'll, we'll figure it out for next time, December first is the next hearing. And so, since we also do not have the additional person that we were hoping for to, to approve the minutes, we're gonna table that to the next meeting as well. So I, I think that's it, and, and so I make a motion to close the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye.